This conference will now be recorded.
Hey.
Go ahead.
I'd like to call the January 18, 2023 ZBA meeting to order. And I hope you'll all bear with me in my first meeting as Chair. I'd like to welcome everyone. Tonight, we have one matter, I believe, continued, and we have one matter up for public hearing. The application will be considered with the presentation, questions by the board, possible public input, possible deliberation and decision, although we have 65 days from the close of a public hearing to render a decision. Drew, do you have a copy of the legal notice?
I do.
Could you read it, please?
Now or before, roll call before?
Um, whatever.
You tell me.
Roll call first, Sherry?
Usually, we call roll first, so if you have to seat somebody.
Okay. All right.
George Door. Dennis Armsher.
Present.
Drew Richards.
Here.
Bertram Schmitz.
Here.
Lori Jaffe.
Here.
Woreen Noonan.
Here.
Tom Schultz.
Here.
Dylan Walter.
Here.
Okay, great, everyone's here. Now, your turn, right?
Actually, okay. Okay, you can read the.
All right, bear with me, I have no voice right now, so it's a little hoarse, I apologize for that. Tom Clinton, legal notice of public hearing. The Town Court of Appeals will hold a virtual public hearing on Wednesday, January 18, 2023, at 7:00 PM to consider the following. Number one, ZBA 22-23 and CAM, 148 Shore Road, Nathaniel Fleming, applicant Timothy and Jeffrey Jennings, trustees from Michelle Jennings, residual trust owner. Application for certificate variance of section 26, point 11, point 8, setback other than a front or rear setback for the construction of a detached garage. Assessors map 86, block 70, lot 121, zone R10. At city hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard and written communication received. The application and company maps and correspondence are available for public inspection on the town's website, www.clinct.org. Lori Jaffe, Chair, Town Clinton ZBA. Email to new heaven register to appear one time on Friday, January 6, 2023, and email to Harbor News to appear one time on Thursday, January 12, 2023.
Thank you, Drew. Next up on the agenda is the minutes, review and approval of the December 14, 2022 meeting minutes. Is, would anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 14, 2022. This is Bert Schmitz.
Thank you.
There was also an addendum to the minutes. You might want to do them both at the same time.
Okay. All right. All right. All right, so I'll correct the agenda. That will include, will someone make a motion to approve the addendum to the minutes for the December 14?
It can be the same motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And say that the motion is to approve both the minutes and the addendum?
Yeah, we'll include both the minutes and the the addendum to the minutes for December 14, 2022.
Thank you, Bert. And second. Second to that, okay. Any discussion? Okay, all voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Okay, moving to comments of the chair. Before we get into anything more substance, I would first like to thank George Door for his years of services, Chair. I think he conducted meetings in a really thorough and orderly way, and I appreciate all the hard work he put in. And he has set a high standard for the chairs that follow him. So, thank you very much, George, and I hope you'll chime in and give me some guidance if and when necessary.
Talking about me? Thank you.
Okay. Another, my next comment is that a matter was brought to my attention by the staff recently regarding votes on CAM applications. It's happened on occasion, and I believe it happened last month, that when, that a member cannot, you can't, cannot vote to approve a variance and then to deny a CAM. So, you can't vote no. I'm sorry, you can't approve a variance voting yes and then vote no on the CAM and vice versa. You cannot vote no on an application for variance and then vote yes on the CAM. So, I've just been asked to give everybody a friendly reminder about that. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions about that. Received applications. For ZBA 22-22 and CAM, 24 Grove Way, that matter has been postponed to February 15, 2023 due to a failure to post the property in a timely fashion. So, that will not be heard tonight. And for public.
Excuse me, Lori, I believe you have to.
Read the whole thing?
No, I think you have, I believe you have to receive the application. Abby, would you clarify that?
There doesn't need to be a vote to receive. This is the next date of meeting within a 35-day window for receipt. So, as long as it appears on the agenda, it is received by virtue of the timeline of when we're at. So, there does not need to be a separate motion to receive.
Okay.
Okay, and so moving to 5A on the agenda, will that be the same, Abby, for 5A since 85 Shore Road has already been received? We don't have to have a motion to receive?
Correct, and it's already appeared on the agenda. And so, this is just a placeholder to note for folks who may be following the public hearing process that it's continuing until February 15.
Okay, and so then ZBA 22, 21 and CAM, 85 Shore Road. That matter, that an extension was granted to continue the public hearing to February 15, 2023. Okay, and then for public hearing, ZBA 22-23 and CAM, 148 Shore Road, Nathaniel Fleming, applicant Timothy and Jeffrey Jennings, trustees from Michelle Jennings, residuary trust owner. Application for certificate variance of section 26, point 11, point 8, setback other than a front or rear setback for the construction of a detached garage. Assessors map 86, block 70, lot 121, zone R10. And it's noted, and this is a new thing on our, on the agendas, which I think is a really good idea. The staff will be indicating when the deadline is to close the public hearing. And that's why that's written there, the deadline to close the public hearing is February 22, 2023. And I believe we have a representative here for the applicant, is that correct? Okay, Mr. Fettis. Mr. Fettis, you're here for the applicant? Okay.
Oh, I'm trying.
Yes, you're here for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. If I could just make a comment before you begin your presentation. I want to raise something. I don't want to throw you off your order of presentation, but it's an issue that I have a question about, and I don't know if others on the board may. I've seen some, there are some discrepancies in the ground coverage calculations. There's a calculation error, in my view, in the application itself, and then in the revised, in the site plan that has been submitted, there are some inconsistencies. So, with, with your permission, I would like to address the, and ask a few questions and have an explanation before you begin your actual presentation concerning the substance of your application. Would you be willing to let me ask those questions at this point?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody have any objection to us proceeding that way? Okay. The, you're at the application that was submitted has a, has certain entries for the, I'm referring to the ground coverage worksheet. For example, there is listed a barn, 208 square feet. And I refer into the application, the ground coverage worksheet, shed for 208 feet. There's no listing of a retaining wall. And then, the numbers, if you look at your applicant, the ground coverage worksheet, it actually comes out to not 25.6% ground coverage percentage, but 26.5% ground coverage. However, the site plan, the revised site plan that you submitted, I believe yesterday, which actually has the same figures as the original site plan, I believe. The, there are some entries that are not on your application's ground coverage worksheet, and some of the numbers, so then some of the numbers are different. For example, the revised site plan lists a retaining wall, but the application ground coverage worksheet does not. Also, the ground coverage sheet lists a barn at 208 square feet and a shed at 208 square feet, but the new site plan doesn't. So, I would like you to please clarify and explain. You know, I think we need to strive for accuracy and conciseness, if that's a word, in applications and in materials submitted. So, I would appreciate your addressing these inconsistencies between the application and the site plan. Because it may go actually to whether the ground coverage is actually 25.63 for what you're seeking. So, if you could be so kind to do that, I would appreciate it.
Okay, well, I can, I don't have the ground, I'm looking for the ground coverage. Which I don't have in front of me, but I can tell you that the site plan ground coverage is correct, 25.6%. So, I'm not sure what the ground coverage worksheet says. I can try to pull that off of the.
Can you find it? I can tell you if you can find it. I have it in front of me. But if you want to look for it.
Well, it's, I need to, maybe if I, maybe if you want to share it.
Well, I don't have, I don't have the technical ability to do that. One of the staff. It's, it's part of the application that was submitted, so it is. I don't know if Sherry can do that, or if Abby can do that.
Doesn't really have permissions now, but Greg, if you take, if you go to the agenda and click on the link to this application, it'll take you to the open gov record. And under the details, it's right up at the top of the page.
Right, the details, thank you, right, not the files, but the details, right.
I made Greg Fettis the presenter, if he wants to pull something up.
All right.
Right, it's.
Oh, I clicked on it, so.
Greg, can you get to the main page where it says details? I don't know.
Yeah, I see ground coverage worksheet. I clicked on it, said my document is ready. Print your document.
This would be back in the attachments are right on the main page where it says details for what you're doing. Probably under attachments there. That's everything that's been uploaded.
It's actually, it's actually when you just go to the, to the details, right?
Yeah, right. Page. But I know you had it also on your site plan, and I know you submitted another site plan later this afternoon. I don't know if everyone in the commission has.
What I wanted to look at is they're not, it's not the same thing that's on the site plan. So, that's why I want to address the ground coverage worksheet, the inconsistencies and the differences between that and the site plan.
So, Greg, that back arrow key at the top on the left, can you go back to the previous page? Yeah, there. And, um, let's see, it should be under details. Can you go back one more? Hmm, I'm just trying to think, because you're probably going into it as a member of the public instead of an internal, because usually when I review the permits, I get to see it right on the detail page.
I'm thinking if you, if you click on ground covered worksheet, Greg, and hit print, you may be able to get it to a PDF and pull it up quickly that way. Otherwise, we can, I can try to.
There we go.
25.6%.
Right, but if you actually look at those numbers, and again, I don't mean to be nitpicking about it, but if you look at the numbers, you go down, you see where it says proposed construction 424? Actually, that number, I believe, on your site plan is 484, because that's a 22 by 22-foot garage. And then you have above that barn, 208 square feet, sheds, 208 square feet. Subtotal, any detracting, any demolition, you see those numbers? These, I want to make sure you're on the same page.
Yeah, this ground coverage worksheet is confusing at best. That's why we do it separately on our, on our site plan. And I can only tell you that our site plan is correct. We're not asking for a ground coverage variance, because we already received that. And I can't tell you, the ground coverage worksheet is confusing. It always has been to me, so that's why we do it on our site plan. So, we only do it on, we only do it because it's a requirement of the application. But again, it's confusing.
But if you look at just the proposed construction, that's just the square footage of the project. So, for the, what would that be? Is that 424, was that inputted in error? Or is that the actual square footage of the proposal?
Whatever 22 by 22 is, is.
484, what is that?
484.
Okay, so then that should have been 484 instead of 424.
Okay.
Right, which raises the ground coverage. If you just look at this document, it raises the ground coverage, so it's really not 25.6. But you're, are you saying that?
I'm saying our site plan is correct, and this is incorrect. I'd have to, I'd have to, we're not asking for a ground coverage.
Did you have any?
Can't hear her.
Lori, we've lost your sound.
The knowledge that this was incorrect, and you just showed, I'm just curious, and you chose not to submit a correct application?
I didn't realize it was correct until you pointed it out. So, the bottom line is the ground coverage percentage is correct at the bottom.
Okay.
How we got there, again, the calculations. There's, there's not a barn, and there's not a shed. There's not both of them, so. At the end of the day, 25.6 is what we have on our site plan. It's what we have there, how we got there. I'd have to go redo everything. All the things don't match with what's actually out there, so.
Well, there's, right, so there's a retaining wall on your site plan, but it's not on your application. So, you're, so you're saying the numbers on the site plan, which are a proposed garage of 484 square feet, existing house 978, existing deck 411, existing retaining wall, which again is not on your, in your application, is 121. And that total ground cover is, so no barn, no shed? And you're.
Yeah, that was. Again, I, there's a mistake on it somewhere. I can't tell you exactly where it is. At the end of the day, we're not asking for ground coverage variance.
Right.
So, we're stuck with 25.6.
All right. So, there's an existing shed, which it says in the existing, is that going to be demolished?
Yes.
Okay. Had you? Well, so you're going on the record and saying that the site plan is what is correct? Those figures are correct, and that the application is incorrect? Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Saying that the ground coverage percentage listed at the bottom of the ground coverage sheet is correct. How we got there, again, the way it's calculated is extremely confusing. So, at the end of the day, 25.633 is the ground coverage that's on our site plan. Those two numbers match. How we got there on your worksheet, I can't tell you what the problem is right now. But our, our site plan is correct. Our little proposed maximum ground coverage little diagram is correct. And, again, your calculation sheet is confusing. But at the end of the day, we're not asking for a coverage variance. The numbers match at the bottom. How we got there on your sheet, I don't know. There's a mistake.
All right, well, I appreciate that explanation, although I know in other applications you submitted, I've always thought of you as very precise and very exact. So, I was a little surprised, and I was a little confused. Does anybody, so Abby, I might want some guidance. Would we, going forward, would we need, we would need to have this confirmed in the record once we get into the, go ahead.
Yeah, I think what I would recommend to the board is that the minutes reflect that the applicant has confirmed that there was an error in the ground coverage worksheet in the application materials relative to the individual subtotals of the coverage of individual buildings or impervious area. However, the applicant has stated on the record that the percentage is correct and that the state, the actual table on the plan is correct. Just, and it's just a clarification of the record. And that, you know, if the board were to move forward with any kind of consideration or deliberation this evening in a direction of approval, you would be referencing the specific plan as revised through January 17 anyway. And so, that would be very specific, that what you would be approving, if you do go in that direction, is on the plan and tie it very closely. But I think that, you know, Sherry is certainly listening, and the minutes will reflect Greg's statement about the, just, it's, there are errors and that the correct information is found on the plan.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments about this?
I'm all set.
Drew?
Nope, nothing here.
Dennis? Okay, all right. All right, so then we, thank you for the explanation. So, would you like to go ahead with your presentation, Mr. Fettis? Will the.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead, we'll have a public hearing, you will have, we'll have presentation, board members will ask questions, and any public testimony in favor, and then we'll take it from there. So, please go ahead, and thank you for your explanation.
Yeah, and I apologize for the ground. I'll try, I guess I'll try a little harder on the next ground coverage calculation to make sure that it matches our site plan perfectly. And if there's a problem that I can't make it match, I'll let staff know beforehand. So, I'm going to switch to. Make sure I got the right one here. Okay, so just, my name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, with an office at 70 Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut. Professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut, representing the owners of the property. And with me tonight is Tim Jennings, the owner of the property, who's actually sitting here in my office with me, and he's going to speak a little bit after I go through my presentation. And I'm going to keep it, I'm going to keep it brief. We were here back in November of 2021. We did get approval for the 22 by 22-foot garage. And we did, so we did get a ground coverage variance for 25.6%. And we also got a setback to the title wetlands. And that was 30. 3.5 feet to the title wetlands, and those two are granted. And we met the side yard setbacks and front rear yard setbacks. So, we didn't ask for that. And so, I don't know if everyone recalls, we had started with a 24 by 24-foot garage, and we actually had it closer to the title wetlands, and we were actually entering the garage, I would say, from the front. So, we were entering kind of over the septic system and entering the garage through the front. And that was why it was kind of pushed back a little bit further, closer, closer to the title wetlands. And, you know, I think the first meeting we had with the commission, there was some concern on how close we were, and a little bit of concern about the, the coverage and so forth. So, we, you know, we, we said, all right, well, we reduced the size of the garage. We, I think we got rid of some, some impervious sidewalk and tried to bring the coverage down to something a little more reasonable, which I think we were successful, because there was a, you know, vote to approve, unanimous vote to approve the variance for basically the same plan, but meeting the side yard setbacks. So, you know, when I, when we got it approved, my client kind of said, great, but can you come stake it out? Because I'm not sure I'll be able to get into it coming in now from the side. You know, one of the findings of hardship was that it's a unique-shaped lot, which it's, it's narrow. There's a shared driveway running along. It would be the east, I guess it's, yeah, the, the east side of the property. And you can kind of see that there's a 10-foot access easement, which is kind of split down the middle of the driveway. So, there's only 17, a little bit over 17 feet to the property line. My client was really concerned, the owner of the property was really concerned with how he's going to make the turn to get into the garage now that it's, now that he's not entering from the front. So, we did, you know, we took, we staked it out. He put some markers out in the driveway and tried to pull his car into kind of a, you know, a pseudo or fake garage, and he really, he really struggled with that. So, we did go speak to the neighbor to the west, Mr. LaSousa. And actually, there's a letter in the, in the file from Mr. LaSousa talking about replacement of the garage and the proximity to his shared property line there of six feet. I'm just going to blow that up a little bit, so everyone can see that. So, instead of the 10-foot requirement there, this is the variance we're asking for, which is six feet. And you can see a little bit of the four, four feet or so of the garage that would be over that 10-foot setback. And now, we're kind of at 21.8 feet in order to get in there. Mr. Jennings, you know, again, staked out, laid out the garage, and he can actually get in, into the garage a little bit easier. So, we are asking for this additional variance. We're kind of a tail between our legs. We don't like the piecemeal stuff like this, but and we really tried to make it work. We spent the last, you know, well, I mean, obviously, we didn't spend that total time trying to, trying to, trying to get in and out of the garage, but we did kind of put our heads together, trying to, trying to figure out the best way to make this work. And, you know, we talked about going back, pushing it further back, so we can come back in through the front. But we felt this was the, the least needed or the least that the variance needed in order to kind of make it work. So, previously, you did find that it predated zoning and, and the lot shape. And again, with the, with the shared driveway and the variance and the, and the existing house and the title wetlands in the back. And, you know, we have a letter from the neighbor, and he's okay with the being a little bit closer. You can see his house is relatively close to the property line. Probably doesn't meet the 10-foot setback there, but he's, he's okay with it. There's a letter in the record. We hope the commission can see forth to grant this variance, which is the minimum required, and make the garage work in this case. And I'll just have. And I'll just have Tim, who's here with me in the office, say a few words.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, I I. You know, tried numerous times trying to get my vehicle into a garage area by staking out the size of the garage door. Even taking into consideration just one giant door instead of two separate doors. Trying to make it easier, but where it was placed originally, the extra four feet pushing it over makes a world of difference. It makes it a workable plan. The other way, it's it just, it's too close to the property line. And I can't drive onto the neighbor's property to get my vehicle in my garage. So I I would request the variance to push it over.
Thank you. And I think unless there's any questions, the CAM application, which was previously approved. You know, we added.
Excuse me, I shouldn't we do the CAM after we do? The application, the variance application? Abby?
You you can or you can, you can evaluate them together. Your your motions can be tied. They said the plan that you're reviewing is the coastal site plan, and that's what's shown. So you can certainly present together if you wanted to and and then, yeah, but the the motions from folks, as you said before, have to be consistent.
All right, go ahead. I will have some, we will, we will have some questions, but if you want to go ahead and present the CAM application, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll be brief. It's the same application that was previously approved. We added. At the ten foot vegetated buffer, which is. Located right here. It's the kind of the stippled area. We did move the silk fence up. Closer to the disturbed area. One of the items was the septic system and and really that's the. You know, we feel that's the best place for it, trying to put it out front. There's water main and. So forth that would, in a retaining wall, which we need to keep ten feet from, so it really doesn't fit well up front. And we did do our test pit back here and it's approved by CRAD already, so, but we did take a look at that. And then so any of the just, you know, basically down gradient disturbance is protected by silk fence. And pervious driveway, we are capturing the first inch of rainfall. And infiltrating that into the ground, which is kind of best management practices for this type of. This type of development. So if there's any questions regarding either the variance application and or the the site or the coastal site plan, I'd be happy to answer them. And if Mr. Jennings can answer any specific to to the house itself. Be happy to answer this.
All right, Greg, I just have one question. How close are these two structures apart? That is the new garage and the the neighbor that approves this this application. How far are they apart?
So there, let me just grab now.
We're just.
It looks about fourteen feet. It looks about fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet, okay.
Yeah. So it looks like we're about six, we're six feet exactly. The neighbor is about eight feet off.
Okay.
Yeah, so sorry, that's labeled existing house on our plan. It should be labeled garage. So really, it's two garages that are kind of relatively. One, his is eight feet, ours is six.
You know, and the the application submitted, you probably didn't update it, but it has project description and the proposed twenty four by twenty four garage. That's on the application that was submitted. So that should be corrected or?
Yeah, two by twenty two. I apologize.
It's not just in the application, it's in your correspondence initially when you filed for this app, this application for variance. The letter refers to a twenty four by twenty four foot garage.
Yes. And then it was reduced to twenty two by twenty.
I'm sorry, we cannot hear clearly who's speaking.
Oh, it's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering. So the proposal is a twenty two by twenty two garage. Our application should be corrected to to reflect twenty two by twenty two. That was a mistake on our part.
And the square, square footage should be four eighty four, not four twenty four. That's what's on the app.
Yes, the number on the on the plan for maximum, proposed maximum ground coverage, the proposed garage is four eighty four.
Understood, but on your application as four and twenty four square feet.
And again, it's not just on the application, it's on other documents in the record, including your letter that accompany the application, I believe.
I'm happy to correct all that. That's our mistake. It was a carryover from the previous application and we just missed it. But it's correct, the plan's correct, what we presented tonight's correct. It's the application. And again, we're not, we're not asking for ground coverage. We're only asking for that side yard variance.
I I have a question, some comments, but I I'd like to let others make, have the opportunity first. Bert, do you have any questions or comments on the application?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, Drew?
Nope, not this time.
Dennis?
No, I'd ask your question more.
I'm I'm sorry?
Well, ask your, ask the questions you have.
Okay, I'm also, I like the alternates. Maureen, do you have any questions? Since we are still in the public hearing, I think you you can ask any questions. Do you have any comments or questions?
Not outside of what you've brought to the table.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I mean, my only, my one question, maybe I'm not clear on this point, but. They're referencing the neighbor saying it's okay with the neighbor to do what they propose. But isn't there a legacy if this person like sells it then? I mean, how, how do we think about this? Is that an issue?
So just for for framing it, the the variance would run with the land. So whoever owns either property into the future, this variance would would be tied to the land in perpetuity unless something, another variance came to override it.
Right, okay. I mean, I guess I understand that. It's just presenting it as it's okay with the neighbor. I'm just trying to clarify that.
Yeah, I I will just say, I think it might have been George who was referring to the neighbor who, and I think you used the word, the neighbor who approved the application. You know, respectfully, the neighbors don't approve applications. They can opine on applications and say that they don't mind or they agree. But it's, you know, what neighbors say is just one factor that the board would take into account. I'm Dylan. Did you have any questions or comments about the application?
Nope.
Okay, um. I, you've already, you've addressed my questions and concerns, Greg, and. About the calculations, but. Your alleged hardship in this application and we're, I'm going by this application. I'm not going by what was said on the previous application. The alleged hardship says the nonconforming lot predates zoning. I don't see that the applicant has shown any unique or peculiar aspect of the property itself. I I know what you said, and I know what was granted previously, but again, is with the calculations. This application, I believe, really needs to stand on its own. So I don't believe, I I think it's insufficient to have a one sentence hard, alleged hardship. I don't think that that is necessarily sufficient to. Saying that the law predates zoning, that's sufficient to establish a need for a four foot side setback, you know, exception to the extent, to the extent of four feet. I don't think that there's anything unique or peculiar about the property that would. Warrant that. I know Mr. Jennings explained about the difficulty getting, you know, getting in, but there are. There are other ways to address difficulty, like a, like a twenty twenty, twenty by twenty foot garage. I mean, I'm not suggesting that, you know, I'm not, I'm saying you should or shouldn't. So if you could address, that's that's my concern. So putting aside the inconsistencies with the calculations. I I would like you to explain how predating zoning is sufficient to establish a hardship here.
Well, I think it's two, it's, it's, that's, that's part of it. I mean, if it. The the lot was established prior to zoning, so if it was. Established after zoning, we we wouldn't be here today because we would have adequate width, we'd have adequate depth, we'd have adequate size. So the house was built prior to zoning, the placement of it, the shared driveway, there's a few things that are factoring into it. It's not a clean slate as you would have with a subdivision of today that met zoning. So zoning was established after there's, there was, you know, nonconforming lots that. Came to light as soon as zoning was established. And so that's, that's how, that's why predating zoning is a factor. If if all the lots met. Or the zoning reflected what was actually there, again, we probably wouldn't be here. Setbacks would have been less, sizes might have been less. But there was a, there was. Whatever board or commission it was that picked, you know, R ten zoning. Realized that there's a bunch of lots that are not going to meet, meet the regulations. And there's a bunch of houses that are going to be nonconforming. And there's a bunch of lots that are not going to have the width that necessary to. Have reasonable use of your of your property. We're, we're not asking for, believe me, we tried to make this work with the variances that were granted previously. You know, we, it is a, you know, if we had a clean slate. Again, we wouldn't be here. We would, we would. Figure out a way to get a garage and a house on there that met zoning, which we've done numerous times. It's when you have existing houses and structures on lots that predate zoning, it makes it challenging. That's why the zoning board of appeals is here. So it's twofold. Our application may have only said predate zoning. But a lot width is an issue, fifty feet. And you have a house that takes up. A good majority of the width that's existing, so we're not gonna, you know, tear down the house to make this all work. We're trying to work within what we have. The driveway is shared, which, which helps in one way. You're accessing two houses with one driveway, but it also hurts in another because you don't have full access to get into your, into your, to use your backyard. And or garage area. So it's twofold. It's not just, it's the shape, which is the narrowness. You know, the fact that you you've got tidal wetlands that back up the back of the property. Again, pose other challenges. If we didn't have the tidal wetlands there, we could have pushed the house back or the garage back. We would have entered, we would have entered from the front as we originally proposed. And had adequate room to make it all work within the setbacks. Which is what, where we, where we started with and where we tried to to make it work. But the, you know, the commission back in twenty twenty one. Felt like we needed to increase that title wetland buffer, you know, and so we we did, we tried. We we said, all right, let's make, make the garage smaller and and move it further from the title wetlands. But that posed the problem of being too close to the house. We can't really move it any closer because the septic system is there. And now we're kind of stuck with a side entry garage, which. We'd be okay with. But we need that four feet. I mean, we're not, we're not asking for eight feet or nine feet or putting it on the property line. We're asking for the, what we consider to be the minimum needed to get into the garage from the side.
I understand and I appreciate your explanation, but again, with all due respect. The house was, the house was there, I assume, when Mr. Jennings moved in, the title wetlands were there. These are all, you know, obvious features. Fourteen feet, I believe you said it was fourteen feet, six feet from the property line and the house next door is what, eight feet? So fourteen feet is pretty close. So I I. I've made my comment, I won't belabor it, but I. If, if, if the law predates zoning regulations, then a lot of houses in Clinton, a lot of people in Clinton would be able to just come in and seek and be granted variances. In my mind, that's just not sufficient to say that the lot predates zoning regulations. So I'm, that's my comment. I don't know if anybody else has any follow up questions about the application or about my comments. Anyone? Okay. Is there anyone, I think?
Yeah, I I do, but I'm not seated, so do my comments even matter?
I I think you can comment in in the public hearing portion, I believe.
All right, I mean, we're talking about a garage. It's not like a nuclear waste facility, it's a garage. I mean, is it a little bit more coverage? Yes, absolutely. But it's also a parcel of property that this person has owned for years and should have the right to be able to do what they want. You can't like dictate everything. And yeah, it it's not, maybe it's not complying a little bit, but. It's a value add, it's a convenience add, it's, it's just a little bit extra land coverage to put his car under. It's not, again, we're not negotiating a site to store nuclear waste or anything, it's just a garage.
Any other comments? Okay, is, is there any one from? Any member of the public who is on the call? I don't see anyone, but is there anyone who wants to give any public testimony? No one? Okay.
Laurie, you have to ask three times.
Okay. Even though I don't see.
You should do it in favor, imposed in general.
Okay, is there any member of the public who wishes to make a comment in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment in favor of the application? I'll ask it a third time. Is there anyone on this call who wishes to make a comment in favor of the application? Is there anyone on the call who wishes, in the member of the public who wishes to make any comments in opposition to this application? Is there anyone in the public who would, on the call, who would wish to make a comment in opposition to the application? Now I'll ask it a third time. Is there any member of the public on the call who would wish to make a comment in opposition to the application? Is there anyone on the call who wished to make any general comments about the application? Any, anyone on the call, a member of the public who wishes to make any comments, general comments about the application? Is there anyone in the, on the call who wishes to make any general comments about this application? I guess the answer is no. Are there any documents that that the applicant wishes or anyone else wishes to be read into the record? I know the record. You know, is is listed in the file, but is is there any document that anyone would wish to have read into the record? No? Okay. So I guess we now move into questioning and tell me if I'm not doing this correctly, Sherry, that. Is Eddie, is every member of the board heard enough to be able to? Make a decision, close the public hearing and make a decision about this application?
Yes.
I'm okay.
Bert, okay, Drew, you're nodding. Dennis? Dennis?
Yes.
And George?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. So then we ask for, um, the public hearing to be closed, is that, that's next to have-
Yeah, entertain a motion to close, yeah.
Does anybody wish to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, Laurie, did you ask your alternates if they had any questions, if they felt they had enough?
Okay, I'll ask, I, I did before, but thank you for, for bringing that up. Do any of the alternates, Maureen, Dylan, or Tom? Have you heard enough tonight to, that if you were seated, to be able to, um, to want to, well, to want to close the public hearing? Do you have any? Have you heard enough to, um, to agree that the public hearing should be closed? Or not have it closed?
Yes.
I'm all set.
Hey, Maureen?
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
So now we can move to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All right, would anyone wish to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'll move- I'll, I'll move that we close public hearing on ZB A 22 dash 23 and CAM, uh, 148 Shore Road. Nathaniel Fleming, applicant Timothy and Jeffrey Jennings, trustees for Michael, Michelle and Jenny and residential trust owner. Have to excuse me, I'm sort of, sort of coming apart here. Application for certificate of variance in section 26 dash 11 dash 8 setback other than front and rear setback for the construction of a detached drive, drive, garage, excuse me. Accessors map 86 block 70 lot 121 zone R10.
I'll second that, Dennis.
Is that Dennis? Okay, Dennis is seconded. Um, is there any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor of moving to close the public hearing? Uh, let's do, um, all right, we won't do a roll call on that. Um, all in favor of, of the motion to close the public hearing?
All right.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the public hearing, um, for ZB A 22 dash 23, um, is closed. Now we would proceed. Go ahead, Sherry or George.
Oh, I'm sorry.
George had a question.
I'm all set.
Okay, did you want to share the question or was it for Sherry?
Well, I just wanted the CAM was addressed, addressed properly or fully, the CAM application.
Well, if, would we, I thought that we would go to the CAM application after, or should we have, um, do we need to close the public hearing on the CAM at this point as well, or do we do that when we get to the CAM?
The, the public hearing and CAM are, are linked. It's, it's a single, the, the public hearing is a single public hearing for the, the plan, which is the CAM, the coastal site plan. So you have a coastal site plan in the record, the applicant provided some additional conversation about, um, the moving the silt fence, the, the buffer planting and some other pieces. Um, and so I would say at this point, the, the application, public hearing is, is closed. And then from there, you can go into deliberations about what's, what's in the record.
The application and for the CAM.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that'll be reflected in the minutes. Okay. All right, so then we move into deliberation and decision. Okay. So this is an application for 148 Shore Road, uh, application for certificate of variance of section 26.11.8 setback other than a front or rear setback for the construction of a detached garage. We have, um, we have heard discussion about, um, the the inconsistencies in some of the material that was submitted and, uh, the applicant has confirmed that the numbers and figures and the percentage that's set forth in the revised site plan that was submitted on January 17th, 2023 are the, um, controlling percentages and the controlling figures. And in terms of the documents in the record, I think this has come up at past meetings. We, do we, we don't need to have Drew read all 37 files in the record, is that correct?
Correct, you don't, you don't need to read the titles. It should be noted that additional materials did come in close to four o'clock today, the, I believe, the site plan in response to staff comments. And, um, what was the other one? A, a updated architectural plan that showed that the garage would be built with breakaway wall construction per FEMA construction, um, guidelines within the coastal, uh, AE zone.
Okay, and, and those are, those are in the 37 files that are indicated, at least as of now, but-
Correct, those are in the record, yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, and I, I believe I asked before, but is, is there any document that anyone specifically wants to have read into the record?
You can't do that now, the public hearing is closed.
Hearing is closed, okay. So does any member of the board have any other, um, have any comments that they wish to make during the deliberations? Drew?
Nothing here.
Bert?
I think I'm ready.
Right, um, George?
I'm all set.
Hey, Dennis?
All set.
Okay. Okay, I think we're at the point where, um, I ask, I will ask if there is, if anyone wishes to make a motion to grant the, uh, to grant the requested variance for ZB A 22 dash 23.
You want me to do this again? Okay.
Say it again? What? What did you say, Bert?
I just said you want me to do this again?
Well, I'm just, I'm asking if someone wishes to make a motion to approve-
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion. You all set, or you want to make a motion, Bert, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. Uh, I'll move that we accept ZB A 22 that 23 and CAM, 148 Shore Drive, Nathaniel Fleming, applicant Timothy and Jeff and Jeffrey Jennings trustee for Michelle Jennings residential residential trust owner. Application for certification of variance of section 26 dot 11 dot 8 setback other than front and rear setback for the construction of a detached garage. Accessors map block uh, map 86 block 70 lot 121 zone R10.
Is there a hardship? You do have, um, several things also in the motion, I believe, and Abby or Sherry, jump in and tell me if I'm incorrect. I think there should, there should be a mention of the hardship. There should be, um, certain, uh, mention of the size of the garage. And Abby, do you want to perhaps tell, suggest to Bert what else?
Sure, so, so essentially what it sounds like the motion being crafted is to grant a variance of four feet to allow a six-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required. As shown on plans titled coastal site plan of 148 Shore Road, Clinton, Connecticut, prepared by, prepared for M4R Development LLC, by Fettis Engineering LLC, um, and revised through January 17th of 2023, which shows, um, a 22 by 22 foot proposed garage structure. In terms of additional findings, the board may want to find specifically that, um, that, that, you know, the, you know, create your, your hardship finding and then also relative to CAM, that they have met the provisions with the, the information's been submitted to the record for compliance under the Coastal Management Act to issue the coastal site plan approval.
That's sort of in the mouthful.
It's a mouthful. I think, I think the, the big thing is, is whether or not there is a finding of hardship and a finding of consistency with the Coastal Management Act for the CAM particularly. Um, and then make sure, and, and again, I think the, the plan reference is, is very specifically one that's been recommended by the town attorney on multiple occasions. Just so it's very clear that the terms that you're approving are the ones you discussed and what Mr. Fettis was, um, you know, describing relative to the coverage consistency and all of those things.
And now Bert has to repeat all that, right?
No, I just-
To state the hardship, Bert.
So move.
I would like you to state, if, if, I would like you to state the hardship at least. I think that should be in the motion or the alleged hardship.
I can find it here. My computers have all been down for about a week. This is only operating on a fixed, on a fixed basis, so I'm tend to believe. You know, I don't have all the paper here. Coming up to the hardship, I think. The hardship, uh, the, uh, I lost something. 148, wrong hardships.
Can I interject? Can I, can I stay with the hardship where that was stated?
Yeah.
Silly, I, I can't?
No, you can.
Yes, you can.
Hardship that was stated, what is, that is a non-conforming lot that predates zoning and he also interjected that it's a lot shape and he did mention the proximity of the wetlands for the hardship.
Okay.
Are there any conditions?
Okay, wait, uh, has anyone wished to second the motion?
Uh, is there, are there any conditions?
Laurie, you have any conditions you want to put up? Or anyone?
Well, I, I think the condition should be, um, whatever conditions were placed on by the previous variance, it's on record. And the silt fence, the buffer, distance from the wetland, I mean, those were things that were, um, that I believe also bind this this construction. Abby, is that correct?
And just, yeah, those, those elements have been shown on the site plan as revised through January 17th, so that, that would also be the reason for stating the plan on the record, um, because those, those elements are on there. One, one recommendation, recommendation staff would have would be just to verify through staff the planting plan within that coastal buffer area prior to the issuance of a building permit. And that can be done when it, when it comes across, um, Kathy's desk if it were to be approved.
That would be the planting plan?
Yep. And that's a question whether that, the, the board wants to adopt that as a condition or not.
And that's for the buffer area between the structure and the tidal wetlands? And the other, the silt fence, that's already on the site plan, that's not a condition anymore?
The silt fence on the revised site plan has been shown to be landward of the coastal jurisdiction line as, as requested, um, in the previous, or as, as required in the previous areas.
That's not a condition for this one because it's already on the site plan. Yep, okay. So it's just the one condition. Need a second to the motion?
Yeah, is anyone seconding the motion?
I'll second it, Laurie.
Okay. All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Ask for further discussion?
Oh, any further discussion on the motion? And this is just the motion for the variance, we're going to take up the CAM next, correct?
Right.
Okay, any, uh, do, do any of the members have any, um, want to entertain any other discussion before we vote?
All set.
Okay. Uh, Sherry, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, George Door?
Yes.
Dennis Ermshire?
No.
Drew Richards?
Yes.
Bertram Schmitz?
Yes.
Lori Jaffe?
No.
The vote is three in favor, two against, and no abstentions. The motion did not carry, the motion to grant the variance did not carry.
And now we, uh, we deliberate and, um, vote on the CAM, correct?
Correct.
Just a point of clarification to what you mentioned before, Laurie. Because I voted in favor of the application, I have to vote in favor of the CAM, is that correct?
Right.
Even though we know it's not passed, okay.
Well, no, you have to. No, but my understanding, the CAM had cannot be, because- The vote has to be the same. Whatever you vote for the variance in the CAM has to be the same.
Okay, right, and I think here because the, the motion failed to carry, the variance was not granted. The CAM application cannot be approved because the variance, the variance doesn't hold, that, so so it would refer to, you would basically default to the previous variance for any potential permitting under CAM.
Abby, people have to vote consistently with the vote on the application, is that what you're saying?
Correct, I guess, you know, is, is, one could say that the coast, I mean, you, it should, it should be consistent, and I think we'll, we'll talk about sort of combining motions and making it a little bit more straightforward as we go forward, but yes, it needs to be consistent, and in this case, um, the coastal site plan isn't valid as shown because the variance wasn't granted.
All right, is, does anyone, um, have any comments or any, uh, want to make any, and make any comments about the CAM before we take a vote on the CAM? No?
Should I make a motion to deny the CAM, CAM, Abby?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I think it's, it's a motion to approve the CAM, isn't it?
Yes, and then you vote the same way.
Okay.
Sure.
Wish to make a motion, since we, uh, nobody has any comments, um, would anyone wish to make a motion to approve the CAM and ZB A 22 dash 23?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the CAM application as submitted in that it's consistent with all applicable coastal policies and includes all reasonable measures to mitigate adverse impacts.
Would anyone wish, uh, to second that motion?
I'll second, Bert.
Okay, uh, any other discussion or, um, anyone have any comments or discussion before we take a vote on this, uh, on this vote? Okay, Sherry, could you call the roll, please?
George Door?
Yes.
Dennis Ermshire?
No.
Drew Richards?
Yes.
Bert Schmitz?
Yes.
Lori Jaffe?
No.
So now we have a little issue, it's three to two, to zero, so it actually says that the CAM carried, I believe, Abby.
Right, so the, and then this is why I think, you know, going forward, I think votes for the CAM should be tied into the variance votes. You know, it, so in, in this particular case, you could find that the coastal site plan, I guess, under this vote met the requirements and, and- met the requirements and, and mitigated any adverse impacts under coastal management, but the plan itself cannot be approved because of the variance. So, this is sort of the, to me, there is a need to, when we're making, when the board is making motions about CAM and hearing them, it's, it's a sing, it's essentially a single application, the coastal site plan is the site plan for the variance. And so I think we're in a procedural sort of back and forth here, and I think that there's been multiple directions that the board has been given. Going forward, I think it's important to have those motions be one and the same, right? If the, the variance in CAM findings all come together, so there's a single vote and you're not, you're not taking two, because I do think that this is, this runs the risk, and so, you know, I think that there is an obligation here to deny the CAM, it's, it's not an approved coastal site plan because the variance wasn't.
If I put, for, for the sake of the minutes, I'll put the vote down, the three to two zero with an asterisk that the plan cannot be approved as the variance failed to carry?
For now, yes, I'm going to have to consult with the town attorney on it because it's not, it's not a crystal clear element here and the, and the vote has been taken, so I would, yep, let's, let's consult with the town attorney on it.
Yeah, all, all of you have been on the, the board longer than I have, but since I've been on the board for the last, what, three years or whatever, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've always done these separately recently, haven't we? We vote on the application and then we vote on the CAM.
Yes, that's the way it's always been done, that's the way we were instructed to be done, so. That's how we were instructed to do it.
So we'll get, it's on, in a future meeting, you'll.
Okay, I'll get some clarification, yeah, I'll get some clarification from the town attorney because I do think you wind up in this potential with every CAM vote to, to have this issue where you, you know, the majority issue. If you're trying to replicate the variance vote, and so if the variance fails, then, then the CAM is denied. And, and I think that needs to be how the record is, is reflected and we need to find a clear way of making motions so that that is the result when it, when a variance doesn't carry.
But on the vote that was taken, the variance failed to carry, so the applicant does not get the variance?
Correct.
Okay. All right, and you'll report back to us at a future meeting?
I'll have, we'll have a conversation in the next meeting about how to best phrase CAM variances that are coming in concert with CAM applications. So what we, I think, you know, my guess is that part of the reason for separating them out is to make sure that none of the parameters of CAM were missed because the focus of the conversation was the variance. I think you can craft motions under each piece as long as you make findings and, and conditions consistent with each set of regulations, you could combine them into one, so if the variance fails, the entire motion goes down and that, that might be one way to look at it, otherwise I'll talk to the town attorney about what happens. You know, if a variance is denied but the coastal site plan is, is not. Because if they come through, if they come forward with an application tomorrow, you know, for, for a building permit and they get zoning review, Kathy can't say yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do we, is there any new business?
Oh, just that. The Connecticut Bar Association Land Use Seminar is in March and two people from this commission, from this board have instructed us that they'd like to go, so we've done, today we processed their registrations, but there's still a couple, a little bit of time left if anybody wants to go. It's, it's Saturday, you have, you can go to, it's a virtual meeting. And, but if you don't want to do the meeting, you can also just order the handbook. They have a, a big book, it's probably about two inches thick and it's got all the case law, basically is all the presentations all put in one book. And you can, you can order it that way too, if you wish.
I don't really want to encourage that though, because then everyone's just going to order a book and we're going to have a budget, so. So.
There is opportunity.
Yeah, and Abby also.
For you to attend, though.
There, there's also free, there's, there's free seminars that, that should, that should be coming out too. If you haven't gotten it already, it should come out tomorrow for, there's a series in February that chunks out some of these things in smaller bits and, and that's an easy one to sign up for as well and then you can report back to us so that we can keep track of everybody's training that's required. It will have to report on by March of twenty-four, so. So we do need to make sure that everybody's getting their initial four hours of training this year, but we want to make sure that we're giving you as many, as many options and ways to get it as possible.
Right. You might want to expand about the training, what, how this came about?
Well, it's, it's in the public act, but the thing is that, that you need to know too, is Abby sent you the information from UConn Clear with the three trainings, one of the pieces has to be on affordable housing and they're offering that. So if you sign up for those, it's, it's only like an hour and a half or something, you do it at home and there's two others. So it's, it's four hours for everybody over two-year period, so it's not very much, but something.
Is there somewhere to go to register?
Yes, you should be getting a link, I, I've given some stuff out, Sheri's going to send an email out tomorrow, we'll get it to everybody that has the registration link. You can do all three of the seminars or you can do, you know, one, two, whatever combination you want. The big thing is that we just need to hear from you what you, after you're done attending so that we can log your hours appropriately, there's a, a sort of spreadsheet that we're, we're keeping to make sure that we keep everybody's stuff together. We'll also send a link, there's a, the Clear is also putting up a calendar of events that you can go check periodically yourselves and, and when they, or, you know, Municipal Attorneys Association or any of that kind of stuff is up there, it's, it's sort of a central calendar for the state where all of these events will be available, so, you know, if you're like, hey, I've got a free afternoon, I'd love to get some training in, you can go check the calendar and see what's coming up.
Kathy, is the, is the affordable housing the one that I indicated to you that I wanted to do or are you referring to another one?
So in the UConn Clear link that Abby sent, there is an affordable housing component, but also, you know, I would say that even though I do this every day, it's so great to have these refreshers, especially on things like running a meeting effectively and they talk about predetermination bias. They always remind people, even though you don't feel biased, you could be appearing biased to, you know, the applicant and they can ask you to read cues and, you know, it's, it's just a really good refresher on like good meeting hygiene and making sure that, you know, I think over time, we have that, you know, we always did it that way or, you know, it's, it's good to remember what the rules are and to remind ourselves. And also things change, I mean, we have virtual meetings now, so there are different things that, that come up and there's always great case law stories to share, so. And I think the ones where you kind of like an hour or something, they're very doable if you don't want to commit to the seven hours on a Saturday.
Thank you. I would encourage anyone who's interested in doing that to, to sign up. Any other new business? Any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Payment of bills?
None.
Agenda, is there anything that we need to discuss? No? Okay. additions?
Just, just on the additions, for the two, the one application that was carried over, if you missed any of the prior public hearings, you need to listen to the audios for those in order to act, to deliberate the application.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda? No? Any, anything else anyone wishes to discuss before we, before I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Good job, Lori.
Yeah, congrats, Lori.
I tried, thank you all for bearing with me, I'll try to remember to have Drew read the notice, no, do the attendance before we do the notice. Thank you, thank you all, do I, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
For second. Dennis?
I, all in favor, all right, thank you all.
All right.
George?